Let me know when you're ready.
All set.
Great, thanks. Good afternoon, everybody. You know, welcome to our weekly town hall open forum update. Beautiful day out there. If anybody gets a chance to take five minutes to get outside, it looks awesome. Just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work. I know today John's going to walk through a few of the changes at the hospital and talk a little bit more about the state data as well as some changes going on in relation to the reopening plan. You know, we're just in the start of that now. We'll keep updating as we go, but I'm going to turn it over to John who's going to get started. As always, please feel free to enter any questions into the chat piece. It makes it much easier for us to answer them at the end. So, thank you. All right, John, it's all yours.
Great, thanks, Steve. Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for joining us. I appreciate you taking the time to get listen to the update from us. I'm going to start off with a quick note that we got from Charles River Medical Associates this week, and it's a very nice letter. So, "To staff at the COVID testing site, Mass Memorial Marlboro Hospital. We wish to thank each and every one of you for your dedication. You represent the true meaning of frontline workers. We send the majority of our patients to you and have been impressed with the efficiency, kindness, and courtesy you have shown our patients. As you continue to fight the fight, please know how grateful we are. Stay safe, stay well." Signed by all the physicians at Charles River Medical Associates. So, great work and just another meditation to all the terrific things you all are doing here. So, thank you. And actually, they're also buying lunch for all the tent, everyone that's working at the tent today. So, the tent staff have been treated to lunch today by the Charles River Medical Associates. So, thank you. All right, moving on. So, there's a, with a bunch of slides, some of them I'm going to go over rather quickly, but just for the purpose, the bigger point is to make sure that you have them available to you so that you can look at them after the meeting if you're interested and want a little bit more information. But we wanted to include them because I know there's lots of questions about kind of what's going on. So, the Department of Public Health has changed their website a little bit in the information format, and that is around kind of the reopening and labeling things with colors and some charts to understand how we as a state are doing with COVID. So, this is their first slide on their webpage now when you check each day at 4:30. Newly reported case as of, as of yesterday was 1,045, confirmed cases is just about 89,000, newly reported deaths 128, and confirmed deaths 6,000. So, you know, we continue to get the numbers. They're going, they're going down, and then here is the dashboard colors, you know, positive trend and progress, negative trend. This is, I think, a very helpful slide and certainly provides a lot of information to all of us of what's going on. This is as well as updated now each day. It really gives you the seven day and what tells you what here, what it is, so I won't bother reading it. But the seven day weighted average, you know, we've been on a decline, the three day average of COVID hospitals and the patients has been declining. There's also still a report that she gives it to you every day and shows you how many patients up or down, but this is really just a good overview of what's occurring. Number of hospital cases using surge capacity, you see a while ago, this was pretty high, and now we're down to 13 areas. So, this is a refresh for everyone. That would be a surge area like what we were doing upstairs in the PACU, using our PACU space as surge ICU space. And that area continues to be closed and will, we haven't given it back to the OR yet, but we are getting very close. While there's been no patients in it now for, you know, better part of a week. Then the last one is three day average of deaths. So, all of these are trending in the right way, which is, you know, good for all of us in Massachusetts. Quick snapshot of where we are today with COVID cases. So, while there is a lot of decreasing of COVID in the state of Massachusetts and all around us and even, even here in Marlboro, we still are seeing a fair amount of COVID patients in the hospital. And one of the things I do want to highlight this is that a lot of these folks have been here for quite amount, quite some time. We continue to see a lot of folks from a nursing home with COVID that get admitted and are here for extended periods of time. We are working with, you know, the state and as well as the town on getting help with the nursing homes and managing those folks as well as, you know, doing what we can to get the patients out of here. We are looking at a new report that will show us what we get for new COVID patients each day versus kind of a trending because some of these patients have been here for, you know, 20, 30 days. It's not necessarily a fair representation of where we're, where we're sitting at. So, lots going on, but you know, we still have a fair amount of COVID patients in the hospitals, the bottom line. And these are requiring a lot of nursing work and care work by everyone in the hospital. So, we appreciate it and we're continually grateful for everything that everyone's doing to care for these patients. So, moving along, next steps. Here's a few slides I'm going to go over. There's four of them. I'm going to just touch on these. You may or may not have seen these. They are out there on the, you know, you can, right here is the download on the bottom. So, afterwards, when this gets sent out, you can certainly feel free. And there's, I believe there's 26 slides or so on the entire slide deck. But it goes into pretty extensively what hospitals and healthcare facilities need to do to continue to open up. Like everything else, it's the color codes and the new titles as we've entered phase one earlier this week. It'll, you know, it shows you what we can continue to do and what we're allowed to do. And kind of the key piece of this is that providers who attest that are meeting public health standards, you know, we can start doing more than what we have been doing in high priority preventative services, urgent procedures that cannot be delayed remote, that remotely and would lead to high risk or significant worsening of the patients. So, we're fortunate that we can start providing more care for our patients as well as, you know, the high risk screening. These are some examples of what you can do in phase one. I'm not going to go through them. They're listed here on the left and they give you some examples. They have some things that you shouldn't be doing in phase one as well as some examples. And the key piece to that is that a lot of it is provider driven and providers need to look at the patients. They know who, who's at risk and who needs to come in because, you know, I'll give you an example of, you know, mammography screening is that, you know, that, you know, the two screenings that are done every few years, every two years or so are, have not necessarily been green lighted to go yet. But there's a lot of patients in those, in that year or two years that, you know, have a history of breast cancer and providers need to go through those and look at those and say, you know, these are patients we should, should be testing. You know, I heard earlier that there's been a significant decrease in the amount of cancer diagnosis over the last two months. It's not a huge surprise based on all the screenings that are being done. So, while there are screenings, they are critical to keep patients safe because we're going to see, you know, these folks that have waited two, three, four months and maybe they were already late. So, maybe it'll be up to half a year, and that could have a serious repercussion. So, we are eager to be able to do. There we go. So, these are the things that we have to attest to. So, you know, you know, when we want to open up services, once again, I'm not going to read them to you, but there's several things that we're attesting to as a system. And, you know, there's been meetings on this to make sure that we're hitting each, hitting each of these and we'll be following up on them each week to make sure that we're continuing to meet them. But the, as a, as a station, it gets done as a system for us, and that's what we're doing. So, moving on to some more of the, kind of the things that actually happened here at Marlboro Hospital, and we want to be able to update folks on or, you know, come clinical updates. We're spending a lot of time around ambulatory infection control guidelines and entrance into the hospital, some examples that, you know, are quick, are eye protection. Lots of talk about eye protection, and now that we're seeing more people walk into the hospital, particularly some of them that, you know, may be here for COVID testing, maybe not here for COVID testing, maybe have, you know, a temperature, is we want to really, what can we do to make sure that everyone is safe as they enter the hospital? And a piece of that is looking at universal eye protection, not just masking, and we're following up later that today on a, on a system. We want to make sure that we have enough eye protection before we would implement this. But for the folks that are, that we're worried about, we've already told them to wear eye protection. This is all taken care of. Outpatient workflows, there's a place on our COVID website that has all the outpatient workflows. And you can go on and look to see what we're doing if you have any questions, and that's going to be, continue to be updated, you know, daily and weekly as, as we have new things. Because we want folks to be able to understand, you know, what the process, what the, what the process is for, you know, for cleaning or for, you know, someone entering the building or for, you know, what the radiology procedures are. So, all sorts of work being done and folks on that, and that area is going to, you know, continue to get, you know, workflows and cleaning instructions, et cetera. We review our labor pool and the jobs needed, and, you know, as, what we're trying to do is get folks back to their, what they were hired to do. And that's making a little bit, that has created a little bit of an issue around availability of needed labor because some things that aren't going away, particularly in the near future, are, you know, the mask cleaning, you know, screening folks, the greeter screening as you enter the hospital, testing at the tent, which I could talk more about in a moment, or tent testing, excuse me. So, we have to balance of, you know, who's available, you know, who, who has not been able to kind of go back to their normal job and how can we stick these folks into slots. So, there's a lot of, a lot of things that are going on. So, it's still an incredible amount of work while we're having more or less plateaued and seeing a slight decline in COVID patients. You know, our focus is still on the clinical need of those patients, but we're also working on, you know, kind of planning, planning for the future and making sure that we have all the necessary resources. And each one of these alone is a, is a big task that people are working on. There's a social distancing task force that's been set up as a system that we're looking, that we're members of. And that's really kind of having conversations about what we should be doing in, in our inpatient clinical areas, administrative areas, break areas, to make sure that areas are getting set up so that we can be six feet apart, that there's, the workstations aren't too close together, that you have enough room for people to take breaks is because if we're all wearing our masks and eye protection all day and, you know, we're, folks are working hard in their clinical area, and then they go into the break room that is, you know, is maybe not very big and they all take off their masks and are eating lunch, having a, you know, relaxing, taking a break, and one person's sick, that's going to be a huge problem for them and for us. So, we want to make sure that we, that we're learning not to just, it's not just wearing a mask at work. What we understand and are practicing social distancing in our everyday lives all the time, and that includes being at work when we're on break because that's, we're putting ourselves at, you know, like an extreme amount of risk when we're in a closed area or a closed area less than six feet without a mask on. So, something to think about for yourself, not just at work, but, you know, as you're leaving. Patients, we want to minimize waiting rooms, waiting room sizes. So, we're, you know, getting rid of chairs, X-ing out chairs. We don't really want patients in waiting rooms. We don't have to have them. Floor markings for spacing. So, lots of conversations. You see some of these things already in the place in the hallway downstairs and in some of the other areas in the hospital. I know, for example, we have taken the Hurwitz conference room and made that into a, an additional break room for the Granger staff to be able to, to eat in because the bookroom is too small for the amount of staff they have. So, lots of focus being done everywhere. And, you know, I'm not, I'll, you know, highlight a few of the areas, but it, it's not just, just because I mentioned it doesn't mean it's not happening in the other places. And then some of the other big things that we need to figure out is what, we've made all these changes. What can stay? What can go? We have all the negative air pressure rooms. We have the ED waiting room that's been changed around. You know, what is the turnaround time for a procedure case now? How, how, how can we assure that we don't have too many people coming in for endoscopy or the OR or for, you know, CAT scan and that we can all space them and time them correctly so that we don't end up with a backlog of, of folks where we used to? And it's all being kind of looked at now, and as we open up slowly and it began to open up slowly, we're evaluating how well we're doing with these and deciding, you know, are we, are we on target? Does this make sense to, you know, how can we make it more efficient so we can bring more folks in? There's ultimately the goal is to get back to our, our previous volumes, but the number one goal is to do it safely. So, we have to start off slow to be able to go fast, and we're going to get there. But these are the things that we're talking about and reviewing each, each day. We have weekly procedure planning meetings. I run those with this, this, in endoscopy and in the OR, and we're talking about, you know, what, what needs to happen in all those areas to make sure, you know, patients get the pre-procedural testing to make sure that it's getting followed up on, you know, how many cases can we book right now safely to, to time it out and make sure that we have enough resources? So, it's, we are, well, it's happening with a lot of work, like, you know, a lot of folks getting, making sure that it's getting done as smoothly as possible because we, we want to do it, we want to do it right. So, outpatient services, you know, for example, you know, GI, we've ruined ourselves to six cases per day right now. And that's, they're being spread out by 45 minutes and, or, you know, by the end of next week, we'll have done several days of this volume and we're going to have a better idea. It's just the, the right amount of, you know, it's just, it's just acceptable. How quickly can we ramp up as we add providers? What do we need to spread out the folks? And what we can do at the hospital is very different than what we can do in Southborough based on the, the size of the footprint, as well as endoscopy here at the hospital, share space with same day and medical same day. So, a few more moving parts there. OR cases right now, we're, we're running two rooms, 7:00 to 3:30, 7:00 AM to 3:30 each day, and we're limited at 68 cases in total. So, that depends on the kind of cases that are getting done. And right now, it's strictly, you know, the cases that, you know, were, may have been elective a few months ago, maybe a tori rotator cuff, you know, several, several weeks ago or several months ago, but as these tendons constrict and they get very tight, they become pretty emergent if you ever want to have a kind of good function of that or, or another, you know, similar type of injury. So, they have to get done. So, we are beginning to do those, and it's been a smooth start so far this week. But lots of moving parts and lots of things left to figure out. Radiology has started doing some, you know, increased services. And once again, this is around folks that really need to get in. These are, whether it's a high risk screening mammal where they had a history of cancer, someone has a lump, and the majority of, you know, those have been getting done all along. But we definitely want to make sure that we're taking a hard look and getting as many folks in that we're worried about as possible. Well, we don't want to ever have anyone sent at home that's at a high risk for something and didn't get it done because they were afraid, ready to get into the hospital. Physical therapy has opened up at Maple Street in Shrewsbury in a limited fashion to make sure that folks that need physical therapy are getting it. And this is, you know, these aren't screening or these aren't chronic issues. These are acute issues that people need to be able to get physical therapy, get worked on, to be able to get back to their normal life, whether it's their job or to be able to go up and down the stairs or to, you know, take care of their kids. So, these are critical services and, you know, we, it's, it's, it's fantastic that we're able to open up and people are willing to come back. And it shows you that there's people out there that need care and they're, that they're, and they're coming back for it. Cardiac rehab, we're looking at that and how we can safely open up that. And it's not just cardiac rehab. It's also how do people that are going for cardiac surgery and cabbages that need to come in and get a little bit more, a little fit before those surgeries. So, this is, once again, crucial, these are crucial services that we need to be able to open up. We're reviewing how to do PFTs. Medical same day has been open all along because those patients getting those medications has been critical. Looking at MedWorks, which is occupational health. And once again, that's another important area because folks that are able to go back to work, whether it's commercial drivers, they, you don't need, need to be screened. They need their physical. So, lots of pieces to this that need to get worked out and finalized. Partial hospitalization, you know, we didn't see a lot of behavioral health patients for, up until about a week ago. And now there's, they're, they're pouring into the organization. We had a, you know, an all time high the other day of 16 behavioral health patients in the emergency department that were, you know, needed some kind of placement. So, it, it's crucial. And, you know, we're seeing more kids. That's probably not a big surprise to any of us who, who have a child and a child's been home now for 10 weeks. That, the kids are, you know, they're restless. They need to be able to get out. So, there's other issues with, inside those, that family that, you know, they bring them to the emergency department because they're, they lack ability to cope and, and available resources. So, we want to be able to open up things like partial to get the people the help they need. Next slide here. So, I'm going to talk quickly on testing just to give everyone a quick snapshot of, snapshot of where we are and what's going on. Currently, we do the, you know, oral and nasal therngeal swab for PCR testing. Those tests are sent to UMass and we get them back 12 to 24 hours depending on when they're sent. It's for diagnostic testing, pre-procedural, pre-discharge, universal inpatient surveillance testing. We started doing, you know, a little, you know, about 10 days ago now. So, this is what we've been doing and it's been successful. Here, we, we've really picked up the time, the turnaround time and have worked closely with the university campus getting this done. The next steps are saliva, and that's a PCR test as well. The turnaround time is all the same. But basically, you put saliva into a tube, a few cc's of it, and it'll be tested. So, it will decrease the amount of PPE need to collect these. But we're, we anticipate being able to go live with this in the, you know, the first half of June. So, more to come on that. There's antibody testing that's going to slowly get rolled out and lots more information coming about that. We have, you know, we're getting the testing, we'll have the ability to test for it, and within a few weeks, the medical center is able to do it now. But there's questions about who, who is, who needs antibody testing, what it, what it actually proves and how reliable and, and what you can do with it. So, while we have it, there's, there's a lot more questions about it than there are currently that we, that we need answered. Couple of quick updates from employee health. I'm going to keep moving along because I see we've gotten a fair amount of questions and I don't want to use up all the time. So, employee health, lots of questions around this, but here they are. Currently, CDC, CDC has new two stratification risk levels. One is a high risk. So, a healthcare provider who has a prolonged close contact. And this is important for everyone to read and understand. So, that's defined as in six feet, so less than six fif, six feet for 15 minutes with a patient visitor or basically someone else with confirmed COVID-19 while not wearing a mask. So, this is a high risk person. And once again, that's why we want everyone to be wearing a mask and less than six feet away, or, excuse me, greater than six feet away. But also, even when you're, when you take your mask off, we definitely want you, limiting your exposure time to folks. If you're eating lunch in the break room, and we definitely want you far away in case someone has it. So, please, you know, read that, remember it, and, you know, understand why. All of others, how we handle exposure. So, healthcare providers, you know, self-monitor, report any symptoms to employee health for testing and follow-up. An employee tests positive, contact tracing is done for the 48 hours prior to the symptoms. So, they're going to call and figure out who you were in touch with to keep an eye on those people. Healthcare providers that are asymptomatic may continue to work while self-monitoring. So, that's, these are CDC, and this is what the entire UMass system and many other systems are following this direction. All right, bottom left corner is what's been done here from employee health with COVID testing. Done 67 tests on employees, 12 positive employees not appeared to return to work. Self-reporting, this is just another reminder, please fill out the, the app, or if you don't have the app, stop in the lobby to fill it out. But this is something that we have to do. This is part of us being able to open up and continue to offer services at Marlboro Hospital that are outpatient and continuing to the phase two, phase three. This is something that we have to attest to and that we have to be doing. So, please make sure you're doing it. We're at 90%. We, and this is tracking everyone who punches in and out. So, it's real time. So, we really need to, you know, be 99, 100% with this getting done. So, please work to and remember to get it done. All right, couple of other quick resources here, quick updates. Human resources is caring for the caregiver. We at Marlboro Hospital have not taken, done a lot with this from, from utilization standpoint. It's all available to us. So, I, if you have questions, you know, follow up with your manager. You just go onto the, the website. It's all, the information's right there. Whether your family needs to talk to anyone, you need any help, and you can't find the information, reach out to your manager and let them, you know, assist you in getting the, the help that you need. Administrative pay. I'm going to jump back to that one in one moment. So, return to work. We're gradually getting people to return to work that, you know, to their jobs I mentioned earlier, that, you know, as we open up services, that we need to get people doing what they were, what they were hired to do. People that are at home that were maybe doing work at home, we're pulling them back in as well as needed. And that's continuing over the, you know, of, you know, now and over the coming weeks, and that's our plan with those. Parking in staff area only. We've been allowing people to park up front for, you know, a long time, you know, since the beginning of the COVID crisis. Now, with the increasing volume at the hospital and outpatient work, please remember to park in employee parking areas only. And, you know, please do that. And privacy, there's been a fair amount of privacy concerns, issues around COVID. And I just want to remind that HIPAA is still in effect, that privacy is a big deal. And even if it's a state of emergency, you know, we've got to follow, you can't be going to other people's charts. You can't be looking around in a patient cares chart and trying to do your own little investigation. If you don't belong on a chart, please don't go in it. It, it's a HIPAA violation. And if you're violating a, you know, if you're, if it's, you're not HIPAA compliant and you don't have a reason to be in a chart, it's not a good ending. So, please stay out of, you're not supposed to be in. Administrative pay has, for all intents and purposes, ended as of April 17th. There's been a few communications out about this, but, you know, we're, we're now asking staff, you know, to be able to come to work. If there's no work in your area, you'd be redeployed to the labor pool. But if there's no work for you, we'll ask folks to take administrative pay, excuse me, take pay time off or no time off, you know, if we can't find any work for you. But, you know, we're working with each individual, you know, each individual, each area. And right now, that hasn't been a, a big problem because we still have, you know, we are getting a fair amount of people back to work. We still have some other roles, but this is something that is, is, you know, a, a big concern of all of ours to making sure that we can get people back to work. And if they're not able to participate, if you're not talking, thanks. Administrative pay has just been gone. So, you have to pay time off or no pay if they're, you know, if you don't, if you don't want to be part of the labor pool. I'm going to mute everyone just for a second. All right, next one. A couple of questions have come in this week around Safe Summer Fun Day. That's been canceled along with, with everything else. So, no Safe Summer Fun Day, no student volunteer program that's been canceled as well. And, you know, just, it's unfortunate and we really love having the volunteers around and we, we miss the volunteers now, but we also truly miss the students. And it's unfortunate, but that's the way it has to go for now. Some pictures of donations and us, you know, handing out some shirts last week and some scrubs. So, really, thank you, everyone, for, you know, your continued support and everything that you're doing. Last slide here, and then we'll go to questions. Just an update in the KMAAN Center. Starting Friday, so that's tomorrow at 4:00 PM, we're going to go to a virtual command center. We're going to look to kind of mothball it and, you know, the physical plant and have it, you know, ready to open up if we, if we need to in the near future and as well as making plans for, you know, the potential of a future surge and what that looks like. The mask pickup location will be communicated out. You know, issues, please, please escalate issues to your managers as necessary. Visitor exceptions, you know, will be approved by the nurse manager or, you know, nursing supervisor slash AOC. Command center email box will not be monitored in real time. We'll still be, still be getting the emails. We'll get back to you, but it won't be instantly. The phone number will be shut down. Over this weekend, we'll have one, one call instead of, you know, the daily call. That call will be done Sunday at 9:30. But there'll be supervisors and AOC will touch base each day with the supervisors. So, I went quickly and it wasn't fast enough, but Steve, do you want to start with some questions?
Yeah, we'll go right through a bunch of these quick. The first one about how does the state hospital count the positives? You know, it's a little confusing. I will tell you, you know, at, at facilities that all use Epic, if you've been positive, we're able to track it that way and the data will go out. If you've been positive somewhere else and then get retested at our facility, it only counts once. Therefore, we're providing good, accurate data that goes out to the state that way. However, if somebody was to go to a non-Epic hospital and then get tested at our facility, they could technically get two positive results and get that report to the state, and that's happening everywhere across the country. On top of that, there are four states that are, have kind of messed up their numbers and have been including the PCR positives as well as antibody testing in one calculation, which is kind of skewing the numbers a little bit. So, there's always going to be little data errors, but we are reporting our data as accurate as possible. The next one, clinic process in the PACU. How is everything cleaned after case? Everything that's lies in the cabinets and drawers, John? I don't, I haven't been involved in that.
Yeah, that's all going to get cleaned. We just haven't turned the PACU over yet. So, that, there's a plan. Most of it's going to have to get thrown away because it's obviously been in a positive COVID area, which is one of the reasons we've been slow to turn it back is that we don't want to turn it back and, you know, end up getting rid of a lot of supplies, et cetera, that, and then have to open it up again. So, yes, it will be totally, you know, it's been cleaned. It's been UV'd, but there's more work to be done. And that's not going to happen until I, you know, I tell the OR staff that it's, there is.
Yep. The next one, you know, it, it really talks about how busy Marlboro and the Grangers have been, and then it gets into the staffing. I'll start with the first piece of this is how are we going to handle opening up? There's two pieces to this, you know, good, bad, or indifferent. Over 90 plus percent of our total inpatient volume at Marlboro and most community hospitals actually comes out of the ER. And our ERs have never been closed. So, there's nothing we're doing to prevent patients to come in that way. So, we're just going to have to deal with the volume. But as far as the reopening pieces there, we are not doing any elective inpatient cases at this point. In fact, we probably will not be doing them for, until sometime in June at this point, until our census starts to drop to a consistent level that we feel comfortable with. We'll continue to monitor that, and that's part of the state monitoring. We have to have so much bed capacity as a system to make sure that we can continue to stay open, but we'll work through that. So, John, do you want to answer the next one? This is all about some of the staffing stuff.
So, yeah, we were fortunate working with Mike Perino from HR. He was able to get some of the DCE staff and that, these U staff was slated for another two to three weeks, and they closed the DCU center as of yesterday, Wednesday. So, we were fortunate to get some of their staff. I believe we were getting up to four of them. I was waiting to hear back on the confirmation of what hours they were available. So, they, that's what they were hired for. They were hired for the DCU surge space. So, we, we were fortunate enough to get some of them to come help us. And we, you know, we're continuing to look for other agency staff, particularly to help out during summer, help some, cover summer vacations. And the DCU staff was often one to one. So, I, you know, I wasn't at the DCU center. I don't know what they had for staffing or how many folks they hired. You know, their census was never super high, and so I don't know what they had planned, but they certainly weren't taking folks that were required one to one nursing care. I, I do know that. So, but I, I mean, I.
And, and, you know, to add a little, add a little bit to that, you know, the way the labor pools work is we, we. the labor pools work is we 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 assign people to the labor pools. And then, you know, with working with the unions as well and and coming to agreement, we you know, the decision was we couldn't force people to go to any areas. We could just ask them. Uh and if they decided not to go, then we would push them into the what was administrative pay at the time and now will be PT and no pay time. Um and unfortunately, even some of the people who were in Worcester, they are given the option to come to Marlboro, but sometimes they don't choose to do that. So as many as we can get, we will get. Um but it's still a choice for the individuals. So um the next one's about uh surveillance in the ER, John, of a rapid.
So the surveillance test is very sensitive. So it picks up positive uh patients. Uh but it's not if it if you're positive, you're positive. But it has a was reported initially that's about a thirty percent fail rate. So you can use it to screen folks. But if it's negative, you still have to go for PCR. And that's standard everywhere still. Um so it so for one, it's it's not a great tool in that sense because if it's negative, you still have to wait for the PCR testing. The other problem with that is we only get forty-eight a week for Marlboro Hospital. There's a limited supply of those testing. So while we would if we had more of them, we would certainly use more of them. We just we can't because we don't have that many of them. We burn through them pretty quickly.
Yep.
Fortunately.
Yeah, the next one's about the where you know asking staff to wear their own private masks from their vehicle to their unit. Uh there's there's a reason behind this. One, you know, with the state rules, we all have to have masks to go into any entity in the public environment. Um and second, you know, it's much easier for the facility to hand masks out out on the departments. Um there's a controlled environment around that. We leave them at the door. Some for some reason, they magically disappear. Um and we're asking people to wear their own private masks from their car into the building and up to the floor. And the reason we're asking you to wear even in the parking lot is it's it's good um practice just for our patients to see that all of our caregivers are wearing them at all times. It's a safety thing. Uh the next one's about joint commission. Um yes, technically, they have deferred our inspection until the crisis is over. However, our window goes out quite a way. Um so it doesn't mean that we will be outside our joint commission window when they come. Um so we we don't we still have to be ready for it and be prepared. Uh and we'll keep tracking that as it goes. Um the next one, John, you want to do that one? That's all about the.
Visitor policy.
Uh patient in semi-private has been exposed to a PCR.
Yeah, the patient in the semi-private is being exposed after a PCR has come back positive on their roommate. That requires that the patient to go into a private and then be tested forty-eight hours from exposure. And then if negative, repeated twenty-four hours later on that. Uh how does this affect discharge if patient is medically clear? The patient can still be discharged. Um there might be some caveats to that around assisted living folks or excuse me, uh patients going back to a a still nursing facility. Uh but that issue wouldn't we it would not delay a a regular, you know, someone that going back to their house. Hope that answers that.
Yeah. The next one's about CT. I'm not sure about the process on this.
Yeah, I there's a visitor one that we jumped over and.
There is?
A rejected plan for visitor policy. Is that something that is decided system wide? I'll I'll read the next one. Do you want to answer that one?
I think that one only went to you.
Oh, oh. Oh, yep, okay. There's a question about the visitor policy. So uh well, it is we are working trying to is to wherever it makes sense to work as a system. But uh well, we continue to look at the visitor policy. And right now, we're not going to have any visitors. We'll continue not to have any visitors. We really still need to limit the folks coming into the hospital. And I don't have an answer of when that's going to go away. Uh you know, there's there's you know, it's keeping everyone safer. We need to understand who's coming into the building. We're going to continue screening everyone that comes in. So I don't see the visitor, you know, uh for a while. I I honestly don't. I if I already if you say, hey, you know, when would you guess? I would guess if it's in the last, you know, it's in phase four, that we could start having visitors again when we're really are when we're in a very good spot. All right. Uh we had a COVID positive patient come to CT from grade one brought by just a transporter. She was not accompanied by a clean person to open the doors and push out a little bit of buttons. Uh should all COVID positive and Sussex be accompanied by a clean and a dirty person? Uh that is what I understood was the practice. And that's something's changed. I don't know about. But um that is why I entered uh I understood that it should be happening. So thank you. And that facility refused to take them back if their test is not back. Uh that's a not a straightforward answer. I'm sorry to not to not answer that clearly. We're it depends on the facility and what their kind of current state is. But if the patient is a resident of the home, you know, of a nursing home, they're legally obligated to take them back. If it's a referral that they haven't been there, there is some variation of whether or not they they can take the patient back. Some places have COVID positive units, which we know about, because they're right right here in the city of Marlboro. Um so it it does just depend on what kind of person is getting discharged and what kind of facility they're going to and if they've had any history at that facility previously. All right, we're definitely several minutes over. So if there's other questions, you know, please email to the MH Command Center. We will we will get them. We'll email it out to the kind of the group, you know, the distribution list to get it answered. But I getting all these questions is awesome. And uh you know, I'm going to I'll make a point next week to be done talking by twelve fifty. So we have ten minutes of questions. And uh please keep them coming. We we want to hear from you. And and I know it's still busy. And I'm grateful for everything everyone is is doing. Thank you.
Very thankful for everything everybody's doing and hope everybody gets a chance to spend some time with their family over the long weekend. Finally, it looks like we're going to have some good weather. So appreciate all the hard work. Have a great day.
Thank you.